We'll call the work session to order. Good morning to everyone.
Good morning.
We had Mr. Royce Parker sign up to speak this morning. So, Roy, you're up.
Good morning, Commissioners and Public Department Heads.
Good morning.
Commissioners, since 1985, I've been involved in a lot of facets of economic development. I understand code names. I built a 40,000 square foot manufacturing plant one time in 110 days and had to keep the name out to public. I understand all of that. But I also know that we have authorities in this county that you can submit a site plan to WSA and four months later, you're still trying to get approval of the site plan. But yet, we have a development authority that gets on the agenda on Friday with a project that wants a quick decision. I would like to take you all back to Fox Hall when it was first presented. They wanted a quick decision. I look at you as the Commissioners as being the board of directors to the Bank of Douglas County taxpayers. I ask that you do your due diligence, look at these projects, and vet these projects. In a three-day window, there's no time to vet a project to give away millions in tax incentives. There are ultimately redistribution of tax money in this county. And I ask that you do your thorough investigation into these projects before you make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You have the minutes of the Commission meeting of February 17th. The work session minutes of February 16th, 2015, and the executive session summary of February 16th. Please review those before tomorrow and make sure they're all correct. Do we have any county administrative business issues?
No.
Okay. We'll jump right into the business items. Approval of Development Authority Inducement Agreement for Project Silver. Chris Pumper, good morning, Chris.
Good morning, everyone. How are you all today?
Good.
Good, good, good. Over the past several months, we've been working with the company, Project Silver, on encouraging them to expand here in Douglas County. And I'll start by saying, you know, what we do in every project that we're working on is evaluating, you know, one, the significance that that project brings to the community, and then, two, ultimately, you know, how we can help that company benefit and that company has a benefit to the local community. So, we, over the past several months, like I said, have been working with Project Silver to get them to a point of allowing us to present this project before the Board of Commissioners. And it's been a highly confidential process at the company's request because they want to ensure that as they evaluate this, you know, there's things about competition amongst their competitors, things that we really have to respect from a company's standpoint. And so, therefore, it behooves us to work closely with them and identifying what's the optimal thing for both parties. So, through this process, you know, we concluded that this project will be extremely beneficial for Douglas County to pursue. And so, therefore, the Development Authority already passed an inducement resolution agreement on Friday. And that inducement agreement was basically to say that we really want Project Silver to invest double down in Douglas County, create more high-paying, high-quality jobs, highly skilled positions here in Douglas County, and make significant investment. So, with that process, we've worked, we've been in communication with the prospect over the past several weeks, just about every day, as late as eight o'clock at night, talking about these things. And through that process, we're now able to say that Google is interested in expanding their facility here in Douglas County. And that expansion of that facility for them allows them to further expand their operations in really putting a global light on Douglas County because this will be a global data center. To that point, we, as a development authority, are making a recommendation that the Board of Commissioners sign on or approve this agreement or arrangement with Google to encourage them to further invest. As we said in the Development Authority meeting on Friday, which is still the case today, this is by far not a done deal. This is still a very active project. Usually, when we come to you, for the most part, it's kind of everything is done, we're ready to make an announcement, but at this point, we're not there yet. This basically is Douglas County saying, we want Google to create more jobs in Douglas County and invest more here in Douglas County. To that point, when we talk about, once again, talking about economic development is high-quality jobs and capital investment. What we have come to an arrangement on or agreed to terms with them is that they would get a renewed property tax abatement for their new investment, similar to what they currently have. And that renewed investment would entail an exemption from property taxes on the new investment over the next 10 years. Within the existing investment, we would agree to a, what we call a pilot arrangement on the existing property. And that pilot arrangement would basically be $1.2 million that they would pay annually to Douglas County government, to Douglas County schools, and whatever that small portion is to the state. So, that, in essence, becomes the, in essence, the structure, you know, of the deal is the two five-year, 100% abatements plus that $1.2 million payment to the local government over the next 10 years. And this was through a lot of evaluation that got us to this point. But the company would do an initial investment of $300 million, which you probably saw on the paper, an initial $300 million and an initial additional 25 jobs on top of what they already have. And this would be the initial investment in job creation that would then scale up over the next 10 years. To give a little background on the initial project, they exceeded the investment goals that they had set forth, are still, are now paying property taxes as a result of that, exceeding the investment, and they exceeded the job numbers that they initially committed to as well. Their initial commitment was 100 jobs, and they just about tripled that figure on their existing investment. So, this is, one, these data centers, these investments on a company like Google, you know, investing several hundred million dollars is important to them, but they could easily do this project somewhere else. And in the nature of the business that we're in, in economic development, you know, property tax abatements, you know, they happen, and they're almost a necessity to doing business. And so, with that point, that's how we got to the point of saying, the only way we can move this thing forward is that we can agree to that annual payment over the next 10 years, something that the county, that the community can say, we know that we're getting that from the company. Aside of that, these data centers are very high-power users. From an electricity standpoint, they have significantly high electric bills, and therefore, they pay a significant amount in sales taxes as well. So, the property taxes is one thing, but the sales taxes is a thing that's going to continue to flow in. It's flowing in currently today, has been over the past 10 years, and will even increase over the next 10 years. And we can't get access to those exact figures, but they're paying several hundred thousand dollars in sales taxes on an annual basis. So, this is, you know, something that we will see, we have been seeing a benefit from by having it here, and will continue to see a benefit from having it here.
Chris, I got a couple questions. You said this is not a done deal, yet the client is asked. Is that a problem?
Well, in, by working on an existing company, there's, it's impossible to, you know, ultimately keep that, keep that from being, you know, there's no way we can talk about things like this and being an existing company not be able to outline that it is Google. And they, they're okay with that. They understand that it's the, it's what they have to deal with, you know, they would prefer that we wouldn't have to go that route. But being an existing company, there's no way you can hide that, and so, they're comfortable.
I guess when you, when you said existing, when you start coming up with that kind of money, we probably all knew who it was.
Yeah, exactly.
Is this any way tied to what we've been hearing on the news about the high-speed fiber that Google is going to put throughout some of the cities and counties in the metro area?
It's likely a component of it, but this is, we would just find this as a step above that. We don't know, we obviously can't speak to what exactly this is being used for. They won't tell us that, they won't tell anybody that. But what we do know is that this is a very significant investment for them. They are stepping into a number of different industry sectors. If you ever heard the term of disruptive technology, that's basically who Google is, they're a disruptor of technology, which basically means, is you've been used to doing one thing, something one way for a number of years, they're creating ways to have you do it differently. And that brings more market share into the, into the company. So, they'll never divulge to us, you know, what exactly this is being used for, but I would imagine that what you're hearing in the news about fiber to the home is a, is a part of that, but we don't know for sure.
Right. Yes.
Yeah. And I appreciate destructive technologies, like, because I teach at Georgia State, and we study Apple and what they've done on the marketplace and stuff, so I appreciate what Google is, but I want to put the name aside for a minute. I just want to talk about our policy regarding incentivizing. And when I look at, you know, as we went to last year's budget cycle, we looked at, and this is from my peers, most partners, we'll come to you, Chris, that we went to last year's budget cycle, looking at, okay, property taxes are eventually going to begin, they're at the bottom, they're beginning to come back, and we're leaving a lot on the table as it relates to commercial, we're doing deals. And I get why we want to incent them, right? It's cheap to do business out here, it's cheap to live out here. But are we undervaluing what we really have to get incentive? And so, I'm trying to do sort of this return on, like, okay, I get it, I get the strategy, I don't, I get it. But for us here locally, if the commercial base is getting most of the benefits, my property owners have to carry the burden because, I mean, we're pretty even in relation to District Two. I mean, you know, 52% is commercial, 48% is residential, but the rest of you guys are pretty much stacked, your residences are carrying the burden. And so, I think about, you know, 20 jobs, 25 jobs, and I wonder, like, okay, how many of those really have this, I mean, how much money is being retained here? And I'm just, like, when I hear this investment, I want to know, how much are we really getting out of this? Because what I hear, yeah, they're spending money on their assets, they're spending money on their infrastructure, they're going to be drawing away for people here to do business, and then they're going to go away, and nothing's being retained, right? So, what contributes back to taking care of the digest? Now, here's my question, Chris, and this is, now I get it. The 1.2, whatever, $1.25 million pilot payment in lieu of taxes, did I get that right? All right. Payment in lieu of taxes. So, that's a flat amount, they're going to pay for 10 years, right? And that flat amount, 10 million dollars, their property taxes are probably some equal amount of number, but what we're doing basically is freezing that payment in lieu, is, right? So, as they put this money into this, 300 billion, that asset is going to grow in value, right? It's going to go up, right? So, I'm trying to figure out...
You've got to look at them separately. So, you've got a new project, and you have the existing facility. So, you're tying the new project, is the scale up or that's under the new project?
Which is pilot or...
Which is, which is the new property tax incentive, the 10-year incentive. The pilot is capturing the existing facility in that personal property, which, in essence, diminishes over time. And so, that's a capture of that holding it constant for 10 years instead of it diminishing to something less.
Right. Okay. The real and personal property, I was trying, help me, please, find this reference. You said the real property is going to depreciate, but the building and what it represents?
That is real.
Yeah.
The building is real, the equipment inside is...
It should depreciate, right? So, I heard him just say that it's going to depreciate, we're fixing it, right? I'm going to pay $1.2 million for 10 years against something, an asset that's going to depreciate over time. But you're only speaking to just the equipment, but the building itself should not...
Well, technically, if you follow the tax digest, you'll see that there's, buildings will appreciate or depreciate.
I get it.
Or just like, just like a home, home values depreciate. These commercial properties appreciate and depreciate. And I've taken the exercise of kind of tracking some of those properties all across the year, and we'll see where they'll have a value of, I'm just going to throw numbers out, let's just say they have a value of a billion this year, the next year it's probably 950,000. I mean, they fluctuate up or down. And I'm not a necessary appraiser, so I can't speak to that, but they do fluctuate.
Okay. And now, I'll close with this, and this is, I'm going to direct this, you go back to Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, this is, this is tough, and I do acknowledge, you know, trying to get our minds around this and ask questions. If I had time, there's some statistics, there's some information that I'm lacking regarding, you know, sales tax, you said you couldn't get it, and I'm like, why can't I get sales tax information? I mean, or electricity, why is this so difficult? Because we're being asked to make a very big, this is one of our key, you know, key, you know, constituents, but you're asking me to make a decision, and do I'm good? Not that good. I can't do this in, like, 30 minutes and just be, give a review on this, other than being a rubber stamp to the Development Authority, which I did not sign up for. I signed up to do a good job of being able to understand this, and so, I don't know if I can make a decision at this point, Mr. Chairman, without any more information regarding this other than a dial-off. I mean, sir, I don't, what do I do? How do we, how do we get through this? There's not...
We get all the information that you need, Commissioner, to make a, to make a decision. If we don't have it, we don't make it.
Okay. I'm just following the lead on this one.
Come on. Anne.
Yes, first of all, I want to address the excise tax, the industry pays. Do you know how much we collect from excise tax? This is from the new law, where they changed it a year or so. From Google or...
Well, no, no, just overall, we estimated, we didn't know how much we would get. How much are we actually getting?
I want to say it was 100, 30,000 because we have to share it with the cities.
You have to share it with...
We have to give them their portion.
Okay. And now, Chris, the...
I'll put it on my mouth.
If I could add to that, if we're talking about the sales tax on manufacturing, is that what we're talking about?
The excise tax.
No, the excise tax from the power.
Yeah, yeah, but that was, that was, that new law was tied to manufacturing. This isn't manufacturing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Be careful with throwing out numbers if we, that we don't know what, whether we're right or not.
Yeah, okay. Very good. I'm glad you clarified that. All right. They already have an investment that is about paid out, is running its course the first 10 years on the old project. So, the 1.2 million would be paid on that from here on out, or up to a certain point. Is that for 10 years?
For 10 years, for the duration of the new...
That would be kind of a new type of abatement just on the old project.
You, you look at it more of as a benefit, it would be a net gain to the county. And so, essence, in essence, what would happen is they would pay only, in essence, they would only pay real property taxes because the personal property in a data center is very different than the personal property in a manufacturing facility. So, a manufacturing facility, you install a piece of equipment, you use it for the manufacturing of, of a product, and you have that equipment for 10-plus years. At a data center, it changes over constantly, and so, it depreciates rapidly.
But right now, that project's not paying anything yet because the 10-year has not played out, right, on the old project?
Yeah. So, the company actually, what as I stated earlier, exceeded its initial goals on jobs...
I know jobs, but I'm talking about property taxes.
Yeah, it also exceeded its own investment. To that point, they have been paying taxes in...
Over the...
Exactly.
What was bonded, I guess.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
I kind of agree, you know, this is a lot to digest, and just overnight, what would happen if we postponed this decision to the next meeting? Would that be detrimental? I know you want to get something done, but we want to know what we're voting on, too. Is there any way that, would it jeopardize the project if we postponed it to another meeting?
Potentially. We'd have to go back to the company and say, here are the things that, you know, here's the feedback from our reading this morning. If we can't get whatever information resolved today, then we probably, if we cannot go on a vote tomorrow, then we go back to them and say, are we still in consideration for this project or...
Well, on the old project, if this fell through, would they, could they move their old project, too?
Yes, they could.
So, we could lose everything?
We could.
All right. Ah, you're back.
All right. Go ahead, hon. I don't have enough here. This is potentially a huge decision, implications for Douglas County. Echo Commissioner Robinson's comment, you know, what one entity doesn't pay in taxes, somebody else makes up for it. You've got to pay roads or build a fire station, you know, whatever the situation, somebody pays for that. Somebody is abating in paying taxes, everybody else pays, you and the chairman, and everybody that's living in Douglas County. I'm a simple person. I like to see numbers, black and white, on the sheet. Here's what we're doing, another column, here are the implications of what we're, what the Development Authority is proposing. And I applaud your, you know, your active, your aggressive posture and recruiting companies and seeing companies expand. I think that's a great thing. But as decision-makers, you know, budget implications and tax, taxing implications, I, for my part, I just need to see more data. We're getting $1.2 million in lieu of taxes for the, for the existing program. Well, what would we be getting if that weren't in place, but we were collecting actual property taxes, for example? So, is it a net gain or loss looking at a 10-year abatement on the, on the new side of the project for a $300 million project? What is, what is the implications there for the abatement? The abatement on property taxes versus what's projections are for sales taxes? And I, I'm not questioning it, it may be difficult to get sales tax numbers on power consumption, sales tax on power consumption, but certainly, there's somebody that can get those numbers, maybe resources the Development Authority doesn't have, so I'm not questioning on that. But, you know, that's vulnerable, too. States all over this country are figuring out ways to recruit businesses. Georgia and Douglas County in particular, we're in the mix, we're in the middle of all these things. And states authorize waivers of taxes all the time, vis-a-vis sales tax on power consumption for manufacturing. When is the state going to decide, well, let's bring in more high-tech internet companies in the state of Georgia, let's waive their sales taxes on power? That's an unknown, and that's something that we have to equate, bring into our equation of what we're, what we're committed to, you know, with the overall abatement. I'm not against the abatements. That's just, that's part of the game, that's just part of the game's chess that you play with other communities. But not having the figures, even if they're just projected numbers, what the implications are, is something that I, I need to see as, as stewards of the Douglas County, checking the county. So, that's kind of around, how do you go back to Chairman? Thank you.
Just one question. Oh, sorry. You disappeared. Sorry about that. And I'm not going to go back through all of it with my colleagues. Can you, can you explain the net gain or, and/or loss versus the 1.2 and explain that side of it?
So, doubling back, this project, we talked about the, this company is managing this company, they can make this investment anywhere. And they can, to your question earlier, yes, they can just withdraw the whole and do any larger project somewhere else. So, we do have that one thing that we have to take into consideration. When it comes to how we got to the point of these figures, understanding this has been a very long, arduous process of how we get to a point of what the company is comfortable with versus there's a lot of proprietary information out there that, that people in that sector can draw from, you know, when releasing information. And so, therefore, they have been very, very close to the vest when it comes to us in these things. What I can do is walk you through the process of how we got to the point of the pilot arrangement. And how we got to that point started out from the company mainly requesting that we abate everything, you know, for the, for basically the next 10 years. And we walked back and we started looking at the numbers to your question, what would you otherwise have been paying in property taxes, you know, had we not been at this point, had things expired and what happened? So, the building, the real estate at that property basically would be valued roughly somewhere around 750,000, well, not valued, but would pay roughly $750,000 a year in real property taxes. So, that, that's, we can use that as kind of your baseline figure. For the new investment, what we're looking at is the new personal property, the new real estate being included into that new incentive structure. So, that's where all the new equipment, all the real estate, all the real property goes. When you look at the existing facility, you're just left with the real property. And so, you take that real property and then you assume that you've got your portions that go to schools and in county of that $750,000, a number that can go up or down. If you take a snapshot of today, you can look at the personal property and assume that it's at, let's just say, it's at this level. And that personal property is valued here along with the real estate, in, the real estate being here, and here's the personal property on top of it. In three years, you're going to be right about here because all of that personal property in essence goes away, and you're back down to real estate. So, now, we're looking at this existing project for 10 years and this new, the new project for 10 years and the existing piece, that existing piece would then in essence be paying $750,000 from year three through 10. And so, where we came back is saying, we're going to capture a portion of that personal property and hold it constant over that 10 years. So, therefore, we're realizing a higher value versus just only real property with this new investment. And so, that was our comeback to bring us to a figure of 1.2 million that carries forward for 10 years. It's something that's, that's greater, you're capturing greater, more than what you would have had had you only done the real property because that personal property diminishes very, very rapidly, and all the new property would have been in the new project. So, that's where we're capturing it. So, basically, year three through 10 becomes your net gain on...
Yes, I think you showed up today with a itinerary that showed all of that to the Board of Commissioners. We would be a lot more favorable than you're hearing right now. Google has been a fantastic corporate partner for Douglas County over the last eight years. We're not even talking about what they've invested in our community, to our schools, City of Douglas, so they can Wi-Fi free throughout the whole city, and we still need to talk to them about getting in county parks as well. But I think we've been, we're being overwhelmed with numbers that we haven't seen before this morning is the biggest problem. Fortunately, I have, you have been talking to me, and Ron has been talking to me, and I think that we had something on paper this morning for the Commissioners to look at to make sure, because, you know, the question that I hear is, well, what are we giving up? And again, Google is a fantastic corporate partner for Douglas County, and I want to continue to do, do business in Douglas County. And, you know, when I take a look at what's going on throughout the state, I know we were Home Depot in Cobb County asking for a 10-year abatement. There's no pilot program involved at all with the $200 million investment over two years, over 10 years. So, we're talking about a huge investment that Google is making in Douglas County. And I think if you'll give us a little more time to comprehend what's in front of us, I hope it doesn't put us in, Ron shaking his head, does this mean we got to make a decision in the morning, or this is project...
I guarantee you that if we go back to Google with, without a favorable... I guarantee you that if we go back to Google with, without a favorable decision, the likelihood of us getting a callback's not very good.
Can you get us something, Chris, today?
Yes.
That will explain exactly, you did a good job of explaining, and I appreciate that. But how I might, I like to look, I like to look at pictures.
Sure.
And I think everybody, we, I think we can get comfortable with this project. I'm comfortable with it. Maybe I've been involved in it longer and that's the reason I'm comfortable with it. But could you get that to the commissioners today? Would that be, well, I'm not, I can't speak for the commissioners.
Well, it's, it's kinda like one of those salespeople that says, you gotta make a decision today or you lose it, you know? I'm walking out the door. So I don't like that kind of pressure, that kind of sales pressure. I would like to be able to look at it and digest it on my own. I don't know if I can do it overnight. I'll try.
Well, I, you know, I can, I can understand your position, Anne, but I do know
I don't wanna lose Google either.
A lot of cases, you're gonna run into these kind of matters when you're talking about the Googles and the Home Depots and all those people. I don't know if the Development Authority could have done anything differently other than, Chris, have something put together from Friday to this morning.
Yeah, we'll, we'll go back to the company and get, and based off of the questions that we received today, we'll get everything we possibly can from that and accumulate it for you as rapidly as possible.
I think we need to get specifics, commissioners. I, I think before we leave here, we need to get specific questions from you. I don't wanna go back to my office and put together something that's not meaningful for you. I want to address, want to address your precise questions so that we can get exact answers for you. So I would ask, i- if it's possible, that you give us that information before we leave here. And I think you can, because I think you've got it. I think you know what you want.
Chris just gave us most of it already, and he wasn't presenting, but I'll give to commissioners. Yes, sir.
Okay. Really, this is not about Google. This is about our process, our interaction with our Development Authority. There has to be a summary of information that has to be shared. I appreciate the phone calls. I appreciate the briefings in essence. But we're, on this level, magnitude, this is like, you gotta give us some leeway to be able to look at this and disagree with it. We're not looking to disagree, but at the same point, I mean, we would be vacillating if we sat here and said that we could process this that fast and just take your word for it. And so I think there has to be, let's not put ourselves in this place, right? When we walk in these rooms, we're like, come on, guys, this is what we do, you know? They need a summary, they need these line items. This is the type of dialogue that we should also be having versus just trying to say, do you agree? Give us the information, the support we need, the evidence that we need to validate this, and then it probably will go a little bit smoother. But my last question, Mr. Chairman, this is really, I've, I've heard about it, but when I hear about this pilot program in lieu of, I mean, and this may be Joe or Ken legally, and I'll be able to, Chairman, how he wants to direct it, which is, can we, can we make money on this? Like, it sounds like I'm making money on this commercial venture, right? The property taxes, I just wanna get what I'm supposed to get. We're paying in lieu of, so there, there's a spread here. Are we legally allowed to do this?
Let me say it this way. Part of, part of what I will say unrelated to Google is generally that would have to be discussed in executive session about some potential litigation related to it. But generally speaking, pilots are not statutory creations. They, they have come up as hybrids over a period of time by way of contract between third parties, DEAs, and governments for payments and all the taxes. So the question of the test would be, is there adequate consideration passing to the county for whatever it is agreeing to do? That's something that I'll have to determine politically, I guess, if that answers your question.
Didn't answer mine. I didn't, I didn't understand what you just said.
Okay. Well, let's assume for a minute that this 1.2, regardless of how it's divvied out, and that's something I need to talk to y'all about separately, but let's say that the 1.2 comes in in a stream over 10-year period. The test will be, what would have come in had you not done it? And if there's a spread, this, this positive for the developer, a negative for the county, what other consideration did you get to justify that spread? If that makes any sense. So if your house is getting taxed at $6,000 a year and you're paying 2 for the next 10 years, what did you do to make up the spread of $4,000? And it can be a number of factors, and it's sort of nebulous and gray, and I think Joe will agree. Jim Monasal is, is one of the premier guys. I talked to Jim last week in Atlanta. He wrote a book about this. And so they are legal. The test is whether or not the contract, it's a contract with you and a taxpayer, and whether the contract's legal or is the contract a legal gratuity? In other words, are you waiving taxes to the benefit of a private person that you don't get back through some other mechanism in the form of consideration? So you got gratuities cost, potential problem, and you have, and a consideration, adequate consideration question. Those are the two issues. And you have to judge each case on a case-by-case basis.
And I appreciate what the Development Authority has done as far as getting that pilot program in place because Google was not offering that kind of money. Development Authority got that. Yes, ma'am, Rick?
Well, I was just wondering, and maybe I'll direct this to Kenny, is that the pilot program, can it just freeze the assessment including the inventory tax and everything, that the personal property just frees that assessment and let it be dispersed the same way that property taxes do? Is that more legal?
Well, I think it's, in essence, the same thing. It's just calling that same thing by a different name. What I mean is, you're saying that the assessment is going to equal taxes of 1.2 million dollars. And Ken's exactly right. Pilots are done all over the place. There's a statute that deals with pilots because the practice has become so common that the legislature addressed it years ago just to make sure that if there's a pilot that involves a city or a board of education, they have to weigh in on it because in some instances, local governments were approving pilots without permission of everybody that's impacted by the pilot. And so that statutory procedure was an indirect recognition of the process.
But is the pilot put on the digest the way property taxes would be put on the digest?
It is. It's assessed, not assessed, but it is a taxation that will be paid based on the pilot every year. So your budget for the 1.2 million
But it's part of the digest?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, it's part of what's come in.
You were saying you were, you know, there's a gray area as to the legality?
Well, the gray area is, are you, is there, when you're, when you're waiving, when you're setting a flat fee tax for somebody, and what would you have gotten had you not done that? And if that number is greater, then you've gotta justify the consideration. What else are you getting? Were you getting jobs? Were you getting sales tax? Were you getting things here that benefit the community at least of that amount, if not more?
Well, the one, it's really the 1.2 versus 750,000.
That's correct. And be careful about the 1.2.
Right.
I didn't really wanna get into this, but Joe's gotten into it. Have you gone to the school board and have you gone to the cities?
We have not. No cities affected, right this time.
So we would get around 30%.
And the school board will get their portion, of course.
So the 1.2's not all going to county, I'm hoping.
Right.
We said, we said that earlier, that you would be forced to, you know, you'd see that.
Yeah, we would only get
Let me mention one thing too.
Right, 30%.
When Google, when Google approached the Development Authority, it was late November, early December. I was talking to Ken about this. And what they, what, the context is, they came and said, this is confidentially what's being considered. And all things sort of came down till today for the purpose of executing an inducement agreement. This is not the memorandum of taxation, which you would normally hear from us because the entire transaction has been formulated and we're ready to put it before you because it would be part of the normal abatement ordinance that's in place. This is different. So when they came, they had certain ideas. And one of the ideas that was formulated by Ron, Chris, and myself was, this is a company that's essentially a second-generation company. Because of the success of the first abatement, they're saying, we are considering doing something that, as Chris alluded to, is big. We had no clue what that meant. But what it did mean was they're staying in the county. They appreciated doing business with the county. They wanted to further invest here, and you have heard what we know about that proposed investment. Beyond that, it's all internal to them as to what they're exactly doing. So we started thinking through this. What would the Board of Commissioners consider to be appropriate for a second-generation company? And so we started thinking about it from that perspective. In fact, we even talked about doing an ordinance where if you have second-generation companies staying here because they want to be in Douglas County, maybe they don't get all their employees from Douglas County, but they provide a return to Douglas County, then what should be on the table for them? So instead of 100% abatement, abatement across the board, Chris and Ron primarily said there needs to be some payment in, in lieu of 100% abatement. The idea there then was, they said, we'll continue in Douglas County. We want to have, in essence, you could say, we want to have grandchildren in Douglas County because we've created the first 10, now it's the second 10. We like being here. And so the concept of the pilot came out of that, where they pay more taxes than they would otherwise pay for the building and for the rapidly depreciating equipment in that building, that will be gone in two or three years. There really are not much, there, there are no more figures really to be explained between now and whenever you act on this, except maybe there's a sales tax component, frankly, that we never talked about. So I don't know what they would otherwise pay.
When would this take effect?
Well, it's an inducement agreement. This is not the final tax memorandum. And it may be two months or three months before we would finally have everything nailed down and come to you with an intergovernmental agreement.
Right.
Would this be year one or next year be year one?
Year one, Chris.
So next year would be year one. The, the current 10-year agreement would go through the end of next year. We would terminate that a year early and commence both the new investment and the existing starting at the beginning of 2016.
So they would start paying the 1.2 million next year, where otherwise they would be exempt?
They would have otherwise been exempt next year.
Next year and the next year, right?
Correct. Well, this, this year and next year would have been exempt, but by, by removing that
So it runs out in 2016?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we, they would be taxable on the old project, the 1.2 million next year, with a, otherwise would not be under the old abatement?
Correct.
One thing, Mr. Chairman, as your members need to be aware of, and Joe's just hit this, but I don't wanna downplay that this is just an inducement and the contract's coming in two or three months. Y'all shouldn't be inducing anybody that you're not gonna follow through on the contract because it would send the wrong message in the market as to y'all's development and how y'all perceive economic development. So I think you need to put the, the filter on it now, not three months from now. Whatever you're gonna do, if you're gonna prove this, you don't need to have your questions afterward because if you pull the plug later, that will be worse than not having proven it, whatever you're gonna approve anyway or deny. So I, I would look at it now, is this what you wanna do? As opposed to send a message to the market and then let them work on it and come back? And not, not prove it later would be a problem.
I would just have one, just a little more.
Yes, sir. Go ahead. I'm ready for one. Go ahead.
No, just real quick, 'cause I wanna make sure I go back to the 1.2 million. Again, my math is going now. We're depreciating that asset over time, right? The real and personal property, right? Is what you said, 1.2 million?
Personal property.
It's the personal property.
Comes down. All right, so here's, you're gonna replace that property. Now, you're gonna replace that equipment at some point, right? At some point, those assets are gonna come down in value. They're gonna become obsolete, and you're gonna replace them. Therefore, you're gonna replace them with what?
Brand new.
Brand new stuff, which means
Pop computers.
It goes up in value. So this is the math problem. I, I don't, I'm looking to be able to do my little analysis and say, okay, let me see how this will braid out. And this is the part where we replace assets, that means it's a new amount, right? It's being added to it. So yes, it's depreciated over time. Yep, they're paying more, but then they're gonna put that asset in here that could be greater than what they were paying. And that's the part where I just can see where it hits.
Any real estate increase would not be covered by this.
I think, I think we're missing something here, folks.
Yes, can I say, please, just, just one little thing? Oh, you wanna, you wanna say something to that, and I'll just
Well, I'm, I'm conducting the meeting. How many businesses, Chris, do you have a seven or a 10-year abatement? And they stay here and take that abatement 70 years, and they pack up and go somewhere else where they've got a bad deal? Does that happen?
Very rarely. The one that, the one that happened was Nioxin, and they were bought out by Procter &amp; Gamble. So it's, it's not one that you can say, you know, is conclusive of that's evidence, you know, these things happening.
What I'm trying to get to, we're not the only player in this game.
Right.
Google can go anywhere they want to and be welcomed.
Yep.
They might be not paying anything if they go somewhere else. They might have a 10-year abatement that they don't pay anything other than the investment, the job they create. I, maybe I'm missing something here today, but we'd have to make a decision. You're right, Ken. We don't need to let this thing, kick this thing around. We have to make a decision. And I feel comfortable that we're making the right one, that I support any inducement.
To, to your point, you know, it, it's always the, the struggle that existing companies face. The existing company always faces the struggle of, you know, all of the things being done for the new companies and not the things being done for, for the existing companies that might be significant investments. And we always have to look at, what's the return, you know, on, on said investment? You know, if you were, if you would provide a certain level of incentive, you know, does that, does that, does that incentive provide a return to the local government? And that's what any business, the business that makes an investment, they have to identify, does this investment have a return tied to it? And so what, what we have here is that company has far exceeded its initial projections, has been paying hundreds of thousands of dollars just in the local, just in the county portion of sales tax over the past 10 years. And they've been paying that sales tax with this new investment, they'll likely be, they'll probably be paying double what they've been paying to the local government in, in the sales tax portion on the prop, on the electricity. As far as the, to Commissioner Robinson's point about the replenishment of that property, we still have to factor here that this is not a done project. It's such that if that project decide, if that's, if they say that this isn't gonna be a good fit for us as it relates to this new investment, I can go somewhere else and I can double my investment, which includes the existing infrastructure, and I could likely get a complete 100% abatement on everything, which is not unheard of.
Do you, would you think that Google's only talking to Douglas County? Okay.
Which is why we're, which is why we went through the process we went through, you know, of getting to a point of an inducement, because this is our attempt to encourage that investment in Douglas County. It's not by, by far had it been due.
Yes, just, just one. Chris, is it possible to, to get us numbers, figures?
Sales tax.
From what, what we gained, the peaks and valleys of looking at the various situations that we may encounter, what we lose and what we gain. And that way, I don't know how long it'll take you guys to kind of pull those numbers up and pull that, that information to get, to get it to us. However,
Now, that's the
Oh, I'm sorry.
The ready for the answers, you're right.
So is, is that, is that possible to kind of get those kind of, that, that kind of information so we can kind of wrap ourselves around it and really kind of understand what is about to happen, the pros and cons of it? 'Cause there are some peaks and valleys that I think we gotta understand when it comes to equipment. You know, the peaks and valleys are, yes, the 1.2, using that as a number, not to say that's what it is, but, you know, those numbers could be, could be a lot different. If you just decided not to go the route you guys are taking, so is that possible? I mean, I don't know. Is that, is that possible to get that information to us?
Yeah, what we'll, we'll do is when we finish here, we'll go back to, to, to the company and get whatever we possibly can that they'll allow us to. Like I said before, when it gets into personal property and things like that, it's a lot of proprietary information that we just, you know, that they're very hesitant about providing. But we'll get whatever we can provide. We'll get that today and get everything, all those questions that we possibly can. If we, if there's a question that you had that we just couldn't answer, then we'll just say, we just couldn't answer it.
Right.
But whatever we can answer, we will get the answers to those questions and have it to you today.
And I would also add that we, yes, it is not like this is a done deal now, even though I, I hear Ken, that we don't wanna give the assumption that we're okay with this, but end up getting to the reals. but end up getting to the real situation and pulling the plug on it for whatever reasons. But that does exist. I mean, that part of it does exist.
The part exists that.
That we decide to pull the plug for whatever reason. When it comes to a vote of accepting the terms and agreements and/or this tax abatement.
Yeah, we.
So that exists.
Yeah, we want to walk out of tomorrow with the expectation that everyone is on the same page.
I understand, I understand. I would hope that that's what you get. I would hope that's what you get, but it does exist to say, this is not a vote to say this is a done deal tomorrow, rather. Am I making sense that I told you that?
It's not, it's not a done deal from the standpoint of the company.
Correct, that's correct.
I've been told that DOR cannot give us the sale tax on energy. They can't give it to you on motor fuel either, so we know, we know that. I think we can get a gas payment and not only Greystone, it's not only Georgia Power, but they have Greystone as well. I think we can get some kind of.
Yeah, we can get, we can probably get a ballpark, you know, figure, but.
We're not going to get any exact number.
We're not going to.
Mr. Mok here.
Two points on the energy consumption tax. You know, we've got Greystone here in Douglas County and a good relationship with them. I would think they would be able to give us ballpark information. They pay big monies to a staff of analysts to be able to project probably what Google is paying to Georgia Power, or they may know precisely as opposed to going to a government. Great Greystone may have the information. Now, let me shift gears a little bit, I'm not talking about Google anymore. But let's put spotlight on where the commission is and why we're posturing the way that we are. Chris made the statement that this has been a long project process of working with Google, working out details and incentives and so forth, taxes and pilots and so forth and so on. Joe alluded to the fact, you know, this has kind of kicked off in November, I think, I think Joe said, in November time.
Yeah, early December, late November.
And here we are, learning about it basically Friday and having this. Back on. I think there needs to be a better channel of communication ongoing between the Development Authority and the Board of Commissioners. I understand issues around confidentiality. You know, make us sign the contract. Then we can't talk to our wives about this or the newspaper or anybody else, that's fine. But there needs to be, there needs to be more ongoing conversation with the people who actually have to make the decision. I alluded to kind of the remark that Commissioner Guyer made, just like, you know, siding says when you come into your house, he's going to give you a special deal, but you got to tell him something before he leaves or it's gone. And I don't think any of the commissioners like being put in that posture. I'm not criticizing you directly, Chris, but it's the process that I think needs to be looked at. So if there's more ongoing information, fuller information, so we're not putting the 72 mile box, you know, making the decision. So it gives us more information, I know all the commissioners will look at it. Back to the chairman, thank you.
And if I could, if I could respond to that, just so you know, just kind of the broad stroke of this is that each project is different as you all know. And for this one in particular, you know, it's been, we've basically been at the behest of the company and kind of what we could and could not, could not share. And so, you know, we, in that process, and this is every economic organization, you have to do what you can to respect that company, but also, you know, respect the interests of the commissioners. And some things, you know, are just potential, you know, deal killers in what you do through that process. And so we've got, we do our best to walk that fine line. Now, from that standpoint, you know, we weren't given the okay to move forward until late last week. And so that's why in this particular.
I can vouch for that, y'all wouldn't even tell me.
Yeah, and so to that point is kind of why we're here today. But I totally, our preference would have been to have had more time to be able to walk through these things. But it's just the nature of how this in particular project came to fruition is that it was moving at its pace and being held to the agreements that were held to. And now being able to formally come to you, even to the point where we had to have a special call meeting. You know, it wasn't ready by our board meeting, which is the prior Friday. So it's just examples of kind of how it's, you know, shifted. But I 100% agree with what you said, you know, we, you know, we'll do our level best to, you know, communicate with the chairman, communicate with our Development Authority Chair as well, and just ensure that we are, you know, walking in agreeance, you know, with an agreed upon, you know, process.
If you don't mind, Chairman, to Commissioner Mok's point about the disclosure, we were told very clearly at the beginning that it was to be kept in a very, very small circle. And each and every time we took a step, I asked him, can I now take it to the chairman? Can I now take it to the DOC? Their answer was no. And the, and I was surprised at all through this thing and how closely they held it, although we've been through it before, but each project is different. In this particular one, there was more secrecy and confidentiality than I've ever seen in any project. And, you know, and it's for their reasons. But I just wanted to assure you that at each and every step, I did ask, is it time for us to take it to the chairman, is it time for us to take it to the board? Until late last week, we were told no.
Just one thing on that, Ron, is I read it in the paper. People were asking me about it. It was in Friday's paper. If I had gotten this, the information before the paper did, I would have had the whole weekend.
It wasn't until that Friday that we were allowed to go forward with it.
And even Friday.
It was whenever we could.
Yeah, it was, the only thing that was in the paper was we were allowed to mention Project Silver, the $300 million and the 25 jobs.
That's all that you disclosed to the paper.
That's the only thing we disclosed at our board meeting.
Well, I don't like to read something in the paper that I'm going to have to make a decision on before I even know about it. I would like to have been given a little heads up because people were asking me about it at church and everything and I don't know. I don't know.
In addition to us being under the, you know, mentioned that it wasn't until 8:45 PM last night, yesterday was Sunday, it wasn't until 8:45 PM last night that we got the okay to even be here. That we pre-scheduled it, but we were in a mode to pull this this morning. If we weren't comfortable with coming to you with the information we had, we were ready to pull it this morning. But it was 8:45 PM last night that we were allowed to go forward with it.
Well, I understand that, having you answered my questions, I do understand it better now. But it was a lot to.
We knew we were going to get, we knew we were going to get it from you, but we didn't have much of a choice except to follow the plan and put our tough skins on.
We don't like reading it in the paper before we know about it, I can bet you that. Okay. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
All right, this was short meeting, we're going to move on to item number five. Authorization to amend the capital transportation fund budget to receive the 2015 Local Managed Improvement Grant, which is the LMIG funds in the amount of $918,470.37 from the Georgia Department of Transportation. And we get that money upfront now, don't we, Randy?
Yes, sir, we do. We've received the check and this is just to amend the budget. We haven't done this typically in the past and I'm told the reason we're having to do this now is because of the service delivery agreements and pending issues related to that service delivery agreement. So we were not able to include it as part of the budget process at the time because it was actually unknown. But we all know as things went forward, we were able to.
That means when the weather warms up, we got money to start paving, Ron.
We've got money, we have money to start paving and we will, this will go towards our 23 miles plus that you all have identified for the 2015 program.
Good, Randy, and I, probably the commissioner would wonder since through service delivery strategy, we picked up a few city streets, can we not apply for additional money for those streets?
We will be able to do that next year, Mr. Chairman.
Not this year.
But not this year. This cycle's already gone by and.
You already have got the check and not going to write another one, that's what you're saying?
Well, yeah, and I mean, you know, they go back at the end of the year and they look to see if there are additional funds that were not allocated. As amazing as it is, there are some jurisdictions that don't take their allocation. So once I get notification of that, once I get notification of that, we may be able to go back and look at some other projects that you, this board might want to pursue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Randy, this is just, as a piggyback, I did have a question of clarity regarding the SDS and specifically the streets that we picked up. For example, Riverside Parkway, you know, I'll speak to that one. Is there certain monies that would, should be coming with this that, I'm still trying to understand that process, that we signed this SDS that kicked in? Are there some outstanding money that should have come to us, that should be coming to us that we do need to begin to address? And I guess is there a plan to now, and I know you've already been working on this, so I'm just going to fully official answer. How do we address those now additional responsibilities that we have? And where's the money at?
Well, the LMIG money would be in the next LMIG cycle.
The next one.
Right, as they update the road mileage for each local county and each local city, then our formula allocation would change based on those additional roadways. Now, there is one project that we're communicating with the city about and the city is intending to pursue a project to upgrade the bridge over Sweetwater Creek on Riverside, at Riverside Parkway. And the agreement spoke to the process for that and how the local match was to be named. We're communicating with the city about that now. But I would, you know, would want to advise the board that that project is in fact not even a project at this time. They're still pursuing funding for that project. So we're continuing to work with them on that and, you know, we'll bring back more information to the board as we know more, as that project moves forward.
I think they do have that on their agenda for tonight. Do they meet tonight or when they meet? But it's on their agenda. Randy and I have had discussions about this project. For some reason, they want to move forward with it themselves. I don't have a problem with it, but we did sign an SDS agreement just at the end of the year and they asked us to take over these roads and we take them over. I guess there's a reason behind why they want to continue with this process. Matter of fact, Randy and I have had discussions that we've got information from GDOT that nothing needs to be done with it. It is safe as is. So I don't know what story behind it is, but it's not a project yet. They made us think it was a project because they agreed to turn over the local match for that project.
But to that point, I brought this up to the vice chairman a little earlier because it's involved in leadership on transportation. When I think about that bridge improvement, what's it called, reinforcement, whatever is happening.
Bridge upgrade.
Bridge upgrade, I think about the entire corridor. And right now, because of the weight limitations, only what half load trucks can come across there right now in theory. My concern is the character area of the entire Riverside Parkway, right? When we now begin to reinforce that bridge, now trucks can come down from 166 and as the point down Fulton Industrial, they go come down that hill, right? We're talking about a lot of traffic. And now you begin to impact and so my concern is that if you're so transactional about, okay, we just want to do the bridge and because we got this new client that's here and we're wanting to sort of help them, which you're destroying the bigger picture. And I think as we work with the city, we got to, there's got to be some dialogue to talk about, okay, but we took this on. We have to be able to shape what this is. This is not just a transaction, just to sort of, just, I mean, there has to be some real dialogue about not just building a bridge, but this is going to have huge impact that that whole, what Riverside could have become, put the recession to the side for a minute, you know, as we come out on the other side, are we having any of that dialogue and the implications of that 166? Like, I mean, trucks just won't come through there and make a cut through. You've talked about this in the past, can you address that for us?
We've not had any direct dialogue with respect to the character of growth and the potential for growth along Riverside Corridor. Now, we have made the city aware that when we update our comprehensive transportation plan, one of the things that we've struggled with in the past, as you all know, is getting better east-west connectivity across the county. We've looked at and we want to model and get more information as to whether or not it makes more sense for us to align State Route 166, 92, State Route 70, that goes down by Balmington Waters Park, whether or not it makes more sense for us to realign that route opposite Riverside Parkway or perhaps realign Anoaki Road from the north down opposite Riverside Parkway. What that gives you in either situation is it gives you better continuity across the county for east-west flow. And then does put more emphasis on the bridge across the river at the Chattahoochee area, Charlie Store in Fulton County. So those are things we will look at in the future. We've made the City of Douglasville aware of that through, or some of the officials of the city, through some of our discussions. But as to the bridge, I will tell you that information that we've gotten from the Georgia Department of Transportation, the bridge in its current state meets the legal load limits for trucks, for the state law as it relates to axle weights for large freight vehicles.
For load?
Yeah, the state load limits. Right, and, you know, so there was a time when they did some structural, flexural tests out there and the models that they had did fall below the structural load limits. So they sent us a posting requirement. We posted the bridge and reduced the load limits. Then they followed up and sent us another test that indicated that it met the legal load limits of the state. So we had the option to remove the load limit signs or leave them up. For the reasons you described, Commissioner, we chose to leave them up at this time.
I think one thing that we need to talk to the city about, Randy, is that this could have been something in the inducement letter to the firm that they're locating there. They might have asked for that upgrade to that bridge because they're certainly into the trucking business. And you know the problem, as I mentioned, right?
Mr. Chairman, but to that point, down there at the end of Riverside and Thornton Road, I mean, that whole intersection is just destroyed almost. Well, I watched a truck leaning in the, whatever you want to call it. You know this and I know Chris was still here. It's bad down there. Now we will put more trucks, I mean, we need to make, do we have a strategy for dealing with that intersection?
The problems that you described, Commissioner, we've worked very closely with GDOT. Most of those are the shoulder radiuses at the intersection that have been obliterated by the trucks and the turning movements at the intersection. The state's gone out and made repairs and within 90 days after those repairs. So ultimately, the solution is to get a project at that intersection that improves the turning radius at the intersection. And I will tell you, there are some things that we've worked, we're working on. We've got some agreements with developers and we've got some information that has been institutionalized through GRADA, through the Georgia Regional Transportation Authority, that are the basis of notices of decisions for development activities that were DRI, or Developments of Regional Impact at that location. So there are projects that are going to have to be programmed for that intersection and those projects are supported by GRADA. We just haven't had the right activity come along yet to trigger those notices of decisions.
That is to all the clients that are coming in there or expanding. And that is to all the clients that are coming in there or expanding down there. You would think that this is a priority. I mean, that, I mean, this, no, I mean, I'm listening to us build other intersections in other places and stuff, but I think about the commercial business that's going down there, and we're saying that we can't get a priority on this to get that intersection fixed?
I can certainly, I can certainly have this discussion with G-DOT, and, you know, we can see where they, you know, are in terms of what investment should be made at that location right now today. I can tell you, the issues are not as much capacity related as they are freight and, and vehicle type issues. And, you know, those are largely maintenance type projects, but, and they've gone out and made those repairs, but it's the level of investment that they need to make as they come up with a solution, and whether or not they're willing to make that level of investment, given the fact that there's gonna be more development, more DRIs that are gonna come, that's gonna cause wholesale changes to the intersection.
All right. Just, just one quick question. Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir. Oh, okay, sorry. All right. With the, the linear roads that we, we've got with this LMIG, can we get another copy of that to make sure? I think I got a copy. I'm almost certain that I did, to verify which.
Yeah, I see it out, but I'll, I'll be glad to see it.
Yes, yes, let's make sure. I, I'm almost certain I got it. I just wanna make sure that I'm looking at the same thing that you're actually looking to do.
It's, it is attached also.
Okay, okay, gotcha. And, and the, and the other thing is, you're right, you're having those conversations with the city about Riverside Parkway. And with the SDS, we are clear who controls, and not gonna make, I don't wanna make it that way to say who controls the roads, but who's responsible for the roads. So, with that responsibility lies the liability and everything else, so that, that would be us, correct?
We could turn that project over to them. They do, their argument is it didn't have a, what, PI number, Randy? So, their attorney, their SDS attorney, evidently they're still paying. I had to say that. But he suggested that since it did not have a PI number, that it was not turned over to us, that project in itself was not turned over to us. You know, I, if they want to control this project, I have no problem with it. But we do have to be concerned with the line building part that Commissioner Mitchell just talked about. And if we turn that project over to them, that's gotta be in the contract.
Well, and to that, to that end, to answer your question, Commissioner Robinson, I don't look at this road any differently now than any other county. I don't look at it any differently. And so, my intent would be that if we allow the city to handle the project, they've already asked us to do some of the inspections and to work with them, sort of shoulder to shoulder. And I'm perfectly willing to do that. But I think in the interest of making certain that everybody understands the, the impact of doing this, it should go through some formality.
Yeah, absolutely.
So therefore, I'm of the opinion that we should issue them a permit or authorization to proceed with the project with our ability to monitor, inspect, and control the project in any way we see fit going forward. And that we have approval rights to review and approve all plan sets and preliminary field plan reviews and final field plan reviews as it relates to the project. We do this all the time through development. People act as agent for the county when they go out and do work on our rightways. I don't see this issue being any different. If they wanna do it, fine. We, as long as it's something that we philosophically don't disagree with, then allow them to do it under our auspices and control.
And we're not asking for permission?
I'm sorry?
And we're not asking for permission, basically?
No, we don't have to ask for permission. We could tell them, no, we're not gonna allow you to do it.
Well, you know, I'll let them know of my disappointment. So, I'll, I think I'll, a number of them, I'll let them know my disappointment. When you take two years to work through a service delivery strategy, this is something they ask us to take over. And then the very first issue that comes up, we see it, we see it, and again, no conversation with us, but we see it on their agenda, that they're voting to. I think they call it the First Amendment to SDS. I didn't know you could amend SDS unless you got the, the agreement between all the cities involved against us. Ken could probably address that. I don't know how you make amendments to SDS.
Well, I think we could enter an amendment so long as it doesn't affect the funding of whatever bucket you're talking about specifically. Ours has, we have a separate road agreement with the city, and I guess if y'all wanted to, y'all could amend it, but there's nothing that requires you to.
I was just gonna say, could we just have a memorandum of understanding on, on this one project?
That, that is an agreement, but I think, I think the context of what is being sent over, it does slightly change the SDS agreement because it's more specific about whatever it is. I'm not even sure I understand it. I'll give you a coffee, what they're trying to do.
I'm not seeing the amendment.
I haven't seen the amendment. It's on the agenda, but we're not seeing anything.
I don't have any idea.
I've had physical conversation with a couple of people. It was kinda surprising that we're amending the, the first road issue to come up after we come up with the agreement. We're amending that already.
Well, the communication, Mr. Chairman, really ought to, i- i- if not from the mayor to the chairman, that the city manager ought to be calling Mark Teal and have a dialogue ahead of time, so at least we know, what are you doing? It shouldn't be this piecemeal, read about paper, and then get sent a resolution. It's already been approved, and nobody over here knows what it is. But, that, that.
Well, I think Randy's had some conversations recently, and my first conversation about this was at the Chambers banquet. So, that's where I heard about it. But anyway, Randy's gonna work through it. We'll come back, give, give, you know, keep the commissioners up to date on what's going on.
I'm philosophically not in favor of this yet, 'cause I just don't see the purpose yet. But as you said, it already meets the states, so why are we spending taxpayer money on something that's already meeting the states? And then why are you opening up the, the floodgates that the public are giving, letting trucks through? So, let it be known that, you know, what District Two positions at this point. Thanks, sir.
Well, the only thing, Commissioner, about that is, if, you know, we say, well, no, we're not gonna do this. If there is a local match, are we the ones who have to come up with the local project?
So, we control it then. So, it comes back, I think it was proper, don't back off, it was controlled. It's like, well, if we're trying to shake, it's like Chapel Hill. You shake what Chapel Hill should be as an intersection. It's beautiful. It flowed, it went with the area. It took traffic off down Douglas Boulevard, get it up off Chapel Hill, it considered Woon Street. You got similar issue coming here with this bridge, right? And so, it's relevant, right? You, you gotta at least hear that, okay, there's a voice coming out of the citizens that says, okay, y'all thought that, ooh, this is not what we signed up for. So, again, we're so in the weeds about a bridge, and we're so, you know, we can do it, we can do it in civil engineering, but it's like, it's gotta tie back to the citizens. That's all I'm saying. So, okay, no need for labor. We're good, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Yeah, I won't belabor it, yeah. Taking it up to thirty-eight thousand feet, Randy, that, that corridor, we, you and I had conversations about that area as well as 166, and how we developed in terms of the character of the area. I want to really force what Commissioner Robinson referred to. We've got tributary subdivision, okay? It, it's in the city. I appreciate it, I understand that. But there's houses and developments all along Riverside that don't expect it to be a thoroughfare for heavy industrial traffic. And what implications the bridge has, you know, I, I don't know. But our transportation plan has to reflect what our expectations are in terms of development in a given area. You know, residential, you know, resort, light commercial, whatever. Our transportation planning has to reflect for that. And so, it behooves us to use the word "control," to control that corridor in, in the context of how we wanna see it develop. Yeah, I, I concur with Commissioner Robinson there. There's, there's an ingress egress to the interstate and, and to the industrial complexes along Fulton Industrial, out the east side of Riverside, of that crossing that bridge and, and going through and buying tributary and all the people that live in there. So, I just, I wanna reinforce that point that our, our transportation plan needs to reflect our expectations in terms of character development for an area and vice versa. That's, that's all, Chairman.
Y'all, y'all have to remember though, you've been there many times, you're entering city limits, you're leaving the city limits. You're entering the city limits, you're leaving the city limits. And the city has a transportation study as well. It should be all one, but they have one as well. So, we have to work with them.
It's the county road. Right, exactly. That's what they're actually, they're actually giving it to us.
Right.
All right, so.
Okay, let's move on here. We're cruising a little. Let me have a break before we get to a four item agenda here. Speaking of east-west flow, Randy, tell us about tab number six, twelve land parcels required, condemnation petition for twelve land parcels required for your right of way needs to construct a property number, which is Lee Road widening.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna jump in.
Yes, sir.
But by agreement with Randy, not shorting him because he wants to talk. I wanna be, I wanna be cautious about two things, and I'll explain why. You have as an attached worksheet, a short summary. In the summary, part of that would be exempt from disclosure, open records, because it's pending negotiations and litigation. So, I wouldn't, part of it's not and part of it is. I just wanna make sure that we don't release this document as it is without redacting it, because what it does is it describes the parcel, which is subject to open meetings and open records. It talks about the owner, but then there's a subparagraph that says what's going on with that particular piece. That would be protected, privileged work product, settlement discussions, blah, blah, blah. But let me just say this generally, under Georgia's new Open Record Act and Open Meeting Act, we don't believe that a, a, a practice of condemnation should be done outside the public, meaning we think you have to authorize these on the record. And so, what we're asking today, today is approval to condemn these parcels running along the Lee Road widening, and we can go through them one by one, or you can see the list. And let me, let me say a couple of things about condemnation first. In many cases, many of these owners are, are real estate investment trusts, or businesses, or banks. There are individuals involved, and you can go by and look. And even the ones that involve individuals, the individuals have pretty much worked out the price of the condemnation. The problem is, we have to get the lien holder to approve the transaction. And many of these lien holders won't look at a piece of paper until there's litigation pending. So, I will say, on probably ninety percent of these, the deal's been worked out. The problem is, to get the bank to look at it, we gotta file condemnation, serve them, and then somebody will call us, and they'll, you know, they'll, they'll work it out. The owner's already agreed in principle to price, but the bank had. In some of these instances, for instance, one of them is controlled by McDonald's, a McDonald's entity, McDonald's Corporation. They historically will not negotiate a condemnation until a condemnation is filed, and I'll tell you why. If, this is more of a tax deal than anything, if a landowner is condemned, they can try to articulate to the IRS a higher value than they're paid for the property so that they can get some benefit of having donated to the government or whoever the, the spread. And so, many times, you'll have a condemnation that's preworked out, and the lawyers still want to file so that the filing constitutes an adverse taking, and under IRS rules, it frees up some write-offs and whatnot, assuming they can prove a value higher than they're getting paid. So, a lot of these are banks, Wells Fargo's one, and McDonald's Corp., I'm just gonna go through the list. Paradise Crossing's Limited, Yvonne and William, Williams and, Yvanna Williams and Robert B. Gunn. For instance, that's one where the owners have agreed to obey. The problem is, the bank won't respond to the, they gotta prove it, and we gotta get the bank's attention. Maria, Miranda, and Juan Gonzalez Kimmarillo, they also have an agreement in place that we just can't get the bank to bless it. Tony Haney, Richard M. Watkins, Robert W. Sellers, and Paula M. Sellers, Miguel Rosado, Reeve Hussein, Hussein, Joseph Pruitt, Villas at West Ridge Owner LLC. So, that's the list. And this corridor has been in planning for, you know, probably a decade is my guess, but. So, these people have known for a while. There's been ongoing dialogue with Randy's department, State DOT, in cooperation about what's going on. What I would say, this is a ministerial act of trying to complete. Ninety percent of it's already been worked out. There are a couple that there are some disagreements. The content of what's underneath each heading for the parcel is not subject disclosure because it reveals discussions of dialogue. And so, I just wanted to make y'all aware. And Randy, I don't know if you wanna add anything?
Well, I would just add, Mr. Chairman, that, you know, this is a federally funded project, federal aid involved. All the acquisition of property has to follow the Uniform Relocation Assistance and Real Properties Acquisition Act of nineteen seventy. It's a longstanding act. It's been around since nineteen seventy. It is the, it is the Bible that we follow when we have to acquire properties that have federal funding. Ken basically covered everything. I'll just tell you that out of these, and by the way, there's, there's a hundred and forty-seven parcels on the project. So, this is twelve of the hundred and forty-seven.
You anticipate any others?
I, I have to say, Mr. Chairman, at this point, there will likely be some others. But I can tell you that we should fall well within the limits of what would be typical for a project of this size. That's around twenty to twenty-five percent. You know, so I know that there's going to be some others. We're negotiating up to the eleventh hour as far as we can and meet schedule. What happens though with some of these, based on when the appraisal was conducted, if we file a condemnation petition, we cannot go into a, into court with an appraisal that's over one year old. So, we have to make sure that we're at a point that we don't have to go back and update these appraisals that cost us on average, you know, about five thousand dollars. Now, the updates wouldn't be that much, but, but we do have to do the independent appraisals again if they're, when we file a petition, if they're, if they're aged over one year. So, following what Ken said, I'll just tell you that aggregately, on the list that he's identified, there are five parcels that we're condemning for title. These are the ones where they're also known as friendly condemnations, where we've agreed with the property owners, but the banks won't release the, you know, the, the title for, for the transaction to go forward. Two of them are owner requested, where they are actually asking us to, to go to condemnation, and typically, these are corporate entities, apartment projects, that type of thing. There is one that is a monetary claim for loss of business. I'll tell you that under the Uniform Act, which is, is the act that I just described to you, that's the short title for that, for that act. Under the Uniform Act, monetary, monetary compensation for loss of business is not a consideration under that act. In order for someone to be reimbursed or compensated for loss of business, they have to, they have to go to condemnation. I mean, it's something that can't be handled by the process, so it requires that you go to court to handle that process. Then two of them have special stipulations that are related to construction that would, neither we nor the Georgia Department of Transportation could agree to. You know, and, and excessive number of driveways, width of driveways, median openings, those kinds of things. And then, one, we're not receiving any response. That happens to be the McDonald's Corporation, corporate entity. They just, they know these things typically, and historically, will just go to court. And then there's one that's a refusal to communicate. And there's a difference wherein we've made contact with the property owner, but, you know, the response has been, go away, I don't wanna talk to y'all, don't send anybody out here to see me, don't do anything.
All right. Everybody all right with that? Have we got a button on these individually, or can we do it?
I think you can approve them as a block, Mr. Chairman, unless my, one of the people out or somewhere.
Tab seven, authorized to advertise for a public hearing to consider amending the Douglas County Speed Limit Ordinance, section fourteen dash seventy-four, to incorporate the mandated, the mandated on system speed limit change for Interstate twenty as approved by G-DOT. Why do we have to do this, Randy? It's state law.
Yeah, it is state law, and it's been mandated by the state. The freeway speed limits are being changed. But in order for our law enforcement agencies to run radar, you all have to approve them to be a, able to actually use detection devices to enforce those speeds. I, I wanna remind the board that about a year ago when we did this, we did. I, I wanna remind the board that about a year ago when we did this, uh, we did turn the permit, permits actually issued to the Douglas County Sheriff, and we did that so as to allow the sheriff authority to enforce the speed limits, of the radar speed limits in both the City of Douglasville and Douglas County. So, the permit is issued in the name of the Douglas County Sheriff, but you all still have the authority to set whether or not we can use detection devices on these speed limits, and on local roads, local county roads, you all still have the authority to approve the actual, uh, speed limits that we set.
Okay, and this is actually increasing the speed limit, right?
It is increasing the speed limit, yes, sir.
What is it?
Seven.
Sixty?
Seventy?
Yep.
Sixty-seven?
Okay. Uh, that concludes our agenda. Uh, I know we need to, to go into exactly the session, discuss... I got the wrong list up here, why don't you tell me, you changed it. Okay, I'm sorry, we'll go to that number eight. Uh, authorization to approve an inmate housing agreement with the City of Douglasville, and I'll, I'll try to, the chairman will sign all related documents.
Mr. Chairman, this particular agreement, if you recall, I think in December we sent it over to the city. Y'all approved it, and then it came back from the city. I had some discussion with Susan Littlefield, and I, Stan, a couple of sheriff's departments been involved in this. And basically, there was a paragraph about what the definition, if you recall, i- if the city arrests somebody that's charged with state crimes, and they're going to the spirit court or state court, y'all have, y'all house them, then you don't, you have to. If it's somebody that is, is eligible to go in front of municipal court, they have to pay for their housing. That's the difference. And Susan felt like the prisoner housing language was a little off, so me and, or Stan and I, I should say, so my mother would be happy, got together and we rewrote paragraph number one, and basically just defined city prisoners. Persons arrested by the Police Department of City of Douglasville awaiting appearance for municipal court of the City of Douglasville for offenses arising out of violation of state law and city ordinance of both. That's a city prisoner, they gotta pay for them. All persons sentenced to jail terms in municipal court of the City of Douglasville for offenses right, offenses arising out of violation of state law and city ordinance of both, they gotta pay for them. And city prisoner, as the term is used, doesn't include persons facing criminal charges or other proceedings in any other court. So, if you had a state court revocation, if you had a spirit court revocation or probation, or if you had any other criminal proceeding in state or, or, or spirit court, they're on us anyway. If they face revocation in municipal court, they're on them. This agreement says they will impose a ten percent surcharge, it's gotta be used for law enforcement purposes at the jail improvement, personnel, housing, et cetera. Plus, they pay thirty-five dollars a head for their prisoners, and they pay up the medical associated with their prisoners. There's also an arrangement, just like before, that, about emergency medical transport and them being responsible for that cost and shuffling their prisoners back and forth to municipal court. So, it's the same agreement y'all already blessed, the difference is, we've more defined paragraph one, I think that's the only change.
Okay. Uh, that concludes our agenda, unless there's another sheet.
Mr. Chairman, where you go?
I know personnel, we think we've had some personnel, anything else? And litigation. Do we have them up to three?
Yes, sir.
I guess two. Personnel, litigation?
That's it.
Okay, moved.
Say.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Let's take the five in the board to come out.
Yeah.